Well, go ahead and get started here again, just allowing everyone some time today as we near the holiday season. So again, you have joined United Solar Energy Supporters webinar on special use permits and operations and maintenance plans. And tonight, we have a fabulous group of presenters. From MRB Group, we have Lance Braven, who is the Director of Planning Board and Environmental Services for the Finger Lakes and Central New York region. He has expertise in SEACR, the State Environmental Quality Review Act, and SHIPPO, the State Historic Preservation Office, MS4 stormwater permits, and National Environmental Protection Agency as well. We also have Shawn Logue from MRB Group, who is the Senior Planning Associate. He has expertise in writing solar and battery storage, local codes and laws, and he's worked on several Article 10 projects across the Finger Lakes region. And from Livingston County this evening, we have Mary Underhill, who is the Kinesis Watershed Manager. She has 14 years of planning in the public sector focusing on environmental and land use planning, agriculture and farmland protection, and she assists local towns and villages in technical assistance and land use code development. From Livingston County as well, we have Heather Ferraro, the Deputy Planning Director. She's been involved with staff reviews for the Livingston County Planning Board for 22 years. She works on agricultural protection, watershed management, GIS, and other programs for the Livingston County Planning Department. And we also have Mike Dunn, who is the Livingston County Solar Coordinator. He will be joining us for the Q and A session today. So thank you to all of our amazing panelists for joining. Couple of housekeeping things before we jump in. This presentation this evening is being recorded and will be available on usesusa.org following tonight's presentation. For questions, please use the question and answer function. And for all questions we don't get to at the end, we'll create a transcript and send to all of the registered participants for this evening's session. And finally, if you are a municipal official who would like to receive their training credit for tonight's session, please email eva@usesusa.org and you will receive a certificate for one and a half hour training. Feel free to use the chat function for anything else besides official questions for the panelists as we go. And I'm Haley Farrington. I'm the Community Relations Manager for EDF Renewables and your moderator this evening. So we will give it over to MRB Group to kick us off here. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Haley. Again, my name is Shawn Logue with MRB Group, and thank you for having us this evening. There's a lot to cover this evening, so we'll try to keep everything streamlined and we'll save the questions and answers for the end of the presentation. Tonight's agenda, we're kind of breaking it into three different components. The first component, the special use permit process and the kind of the regulatory role and kind of the board's functions and the components, what we typically see in a solar ordinance. The second component is going to be the county referral process and role in regards to the review of these solar energy and battery storage projects. The third component is going to be the operations and maintenance plan and some of the key requirements. And then a couple other little fun things that we're going to talk about are the special use permit conditions and pre-construction meeting. That is very beneficial. So just jumping right into this. So as you know, solar has been on a tear in New York State due to several different initiatives such as New York Sun Initiative. And you know, their goal that they set out was to have three gigawatt installed by 2023. And according to New York Sun data, as of September of this year, we're currently exceeding that total right now. So we are definitely on the move with solar. Currently, there is approximately 150,000 projects, according to New York Sun in New York State. That ranges from small to very large to Article 10 to 94C projects. And also with, I should say, former Cuomo's Climate Change Protection Act, he set out to have 70% of all electricity be generated by renewable energies by 2030. So that's just some kind of why all these municipalities are seeing influx in applications, seeing influx of code updates and moratoriums. So that being said, we're going to kind of get in the nuts and bolts. And again, if you can just save your questions towards the end, we'll get to those. The next area that we would like to talk about is the local government role in the regulatory framework. So when a municipality is looking to establish a solar energy system or a battery energy system code, there's a lot of things you need to take into consideration. One, that is, you know, getting your resources. What are those resources? Looking at NYSERTA's model ordinance, it's looking at other municipality codes and so forth. So you gather all those resources, you take a look at them, you dissect them. How do they fit your community? How do they fit your code? And you know, the big thing that steers developing a sound code is establishing a steering committee. And that's kind of where I highlighted on here, some of these, you know, the legislative body, that would be your municipal board, your code enforcement officer, ZBA members, Planning Board members. You want a well-rounded steering committee. So this steering committee is going to, when you're formulating a solar code, they're going to be meeting, they're going to be reviewing, they're going to, they know the community better than the municipal engineer that's developing it. So it's really important to have a well-defined committee to review that code and go through the process. I'm doing this with many municipalities right now, and having a well-rounded steering committee is very, very beneficial.
Here we have the legislative body, the code enforcement officer. Those guys are all players in the review of the solar law too. So once it gets established, once you have a committee formulating that code, these are typically the players that are responsible for reviewing that code, whether it's by referral from the legislative body or as part of that process. They're going to reach out to these entities and get information for it. So a lot of times, you might have a third-party engineer assist with that review or a town attorney who knows the process of the legislative, excuse me, the legal actions. And then also the county, your local county, they're going to be a sounding board to tell you what's going on, what are some of the current things they're seeing, you're going to reach out to them to get information, and they're going to respond accordingly. So these are the players that we typically see as part of that process. And then we have, so once you have the solar law and you're going through that process, some of the requirements that we see them as you're writing it is, is you're going to want to make it, at least most of the time, we see it being a special use permit, which is what we're going to highlight today, and then requiring a site plan as part of that process. There's some communities that we've been a part of that we've seen where they want to do an overlay district, and that's how they require the locations and processes for determining solar law or, excuse me, solar energy systems. We've seen some want to go the incentive zoning route. We've seen some want to do PUD districts. All those, sure, they could be successful processes, but I think they convolute the process a little bit more than make it a little bit more difficult than it needs to be. So I think we believe we've seen the more successful avenue in terms of developing a solar law and going through the review process is going through and making it a special use permit and then having the site plan component be part of that process. And then as part of the site plans, obviously, once you require a site plan, it's got to meet all the standard requirements in New York State, including uniform fire prevention. We'll highlight some of that stuff later on as conditions. Let me get to that part. But what we're generally informing everybody is that even though these are solar projects, they still have to have a suitable access road, they still have means to get fire apparatus around the site, and there's requirements along that that we have to meet that are in the fire code. Some of them are up for interpretation by the code enforcement officer on what they want to push and not push. But most of the time, we see full compliance with that code as much as we can. And then as part of that process, as part of the adoption of the solar law, it's going to require a SEACR. And that SEACR is usually a legislative action, but it's a full type-one SEACR, usually a coordinated review, but a lot of times the coordination's with, you know, the local municipalities that surround your municipality and then referral to the county as part of that process.
The next, we're just kind of differentiating the types of uses that we see within these ordinances. And again, a well-crafted regulation really needs to define a different type, whether that is a, you know, an accessory, whether that's a commercial building roof-mounted, or is that a large-scale system? And this slide kind of highlights, you know, what is a principal use? That's usually one use per site, you know, for example, and that also includes large-scale systems. A large-scale solar energy system, it depends on the community. And NYSERTA does identify different tiers, like a tier one, tier two, and a tier three. And that could be, you know, 2.5 megawatts or larger. But I've seen a lot of communities identify large scale as being 2, 3, 4, 5 megawatts or larger for off-site consumption. Well, in Article 10, which is a whole different arena, is 10 megawatt, sorry, 20 megawatts or more. If you get a project in your town, that's automatically going to be reviewed by the Department of State. And that is, that kind of leaves the jurisdiction of the town, the municipal role. You still have a say in the project, but it is reviewed by the Department of State, which they have a siting board made of D.C., Army Corps, Department of Health, and so forth. And we can get into that in the Q and A if anyone has any questions in regards to Article 10 or the 94C process. So this slide just kind of breaks up, what is an accessory use? Accessory uses are typically what you see on side of houses, pole-mounted, solar. And then secondary uses are, you know, something that you typically use to send off site. These are typically medium-scale systems such as commercial building-mounted, commercial roof-mounted systems. And then lastly, a special use permit, which we're talking about this evening. So so this is just a little quote from, you know, the authorization of a particular land use that is permitted in a zoning law subject to specific requirements that are imposed to ensure that the proposed use is in harmony with the immediate neighborhood and will not adversely affect surrounding properties. So when we're developing these codes and we're looking at, you know, these bigger, larger solar energy projects, we really need to look into the land use. Where do they fit in the community? What districts do they fit in? You know, do we want to allow them in just the ag district? Do we want to allow them in the industrial districts? We want to look at setbacks. We want to look at buffering. We want to, and this is what we're going to get into when we start looking at the standards a little bit later on.
Yeah, as Sean was highlighting, part of the adoption of the solar law, the committee's going to look to determine where they want solar. Most of the time, we've seen this designation being identified for agriculture uses because that NYSERTA suggests that ag markets also deem it appropriate. Obviously, there's conditions that have to be met and filed for that, but the justification is that you could put solar there and in 30 years, the soil can then be reformed to be agricultural and produce agricultural uses. So that's typically why we see agricultural use as being something that's suggested as the designated location for solar, but also it's because they have the largest acreage of land, which makes it a little bit easier for solar projects to come in and get the size that they're looking for. It doesn't mean that we can't identify other locations or eliminate ag uses, excuse me, ag lands altogether. It's just this is where you need to define how you're going to do that. Some have done it by buffering, which Shawn will cover as part of the standards. Some have, I know Livingston County was one of the companies that we've seen where prime soils has been a big part of that process. So some of the local municipalities have regulated their law to eliminate a percentage of prime soil land from being used as part of the solar process. So the code itself, as you get through and as you start working through that process, you're going to start to determine where you want to allow it and where you don't, and that will have to be part of that solar law.
The next participant we're going to talk, under state law, authorized municipalities, obviously under New York State law, to adopt and to do special use permits as part of their zoning process. And I have notes on these slides with specific New York State law sections, which I can provide for all the participants after this meeting. But so, you know, the question is, who issues a special use permit? Really, it's to the discretion of the municipal board. It could be the city council, town board, village board of trustees, it could be the ZBA, it could be the planning board. But what we've found to be the most successful board to review and issue an S U P with the conditions is typically the planning board, because the planning board is reviewing the project in the site plan review process. So it makes it more streamlined, more transparent, rather than having the ZBA review it and then kicking it back to a referral to the planning board, and then something gets lost in translation. So we like to see, we see the most successful communities using the planning board as a reviewing board for the special use permit.
Yeah, just on top of that, some of the other additional reasons are, you have to do SEACR. And when you have two boards involved, well, one of them is going to be designated lead agency. Who would be the most appropriate board to be the lead agency? Typically, you know, for any variance application or if the ZBA is designated for the special use permits, they might be the most appropriate, but when you start getting site plan applications as part of that, that would fall on the planning board. And so it just does make it a little bit easier when the planning board's the sole responsible party for doing site plan and special use permit, because it just makes it with one board. But we've seen them all different ways. The ZBA can still have a role. And if they do have the issuance of the special use permit, there's plenty of communities that do both, and it's very successful that way as well. We're just trying to identify some of the more, some of the ones that we've seen where it makes it a little bit easier on all parties involved when the planning board's designated. But either way, if there is a separation in boards and their roles, typically in this instance, this is where you would see the planning board be lead as far as as doing SEACR for coordinated review under the solar law. The zoning codes are, you know, with the review processes. So the zoning codes generally require more intense review of the solar systems as impacted by associated, associated with the specified types and increases. Smaller systems with fewer or no land use impacts, for example, like your roof-mounted or your accessory uses, they may be exempt from review or enjoy streamlined. So basically, what we've seen in most solar laws is when you have that type of use, that the smaller system, the accessory use, a lot of times those are type-two actions under SEACR, or they get issued by, excuse me, by building permit application. You know, it doesn't need to go through this formal review that are more associated with the large systems that we're going to highlight.
Right, and a lot of these smaller systems, you know, like residential properties or even used in the backyard by a farmer, like Lance said, they're type-two actions. And usually, for a lot of communities, they'll adopt within their code that these can be reviewed. And typically, they're allowed in all districts. They're not set to, they're not restricted to just a certain district. But a lot of the times, what they're, they're reviewed administratively, and they also adopt NYSERTA's unified permit. So there is a standard permit that can be used to accompany the building permit for that municipality. And the larger-scale systems are obviously more rigorous, time-consuming, intense review. And mostly, all these under SEACR are a type-one action, which requires a formal coordinated review with, you know, D.C., Army Corps, a bunch of different outside agencies, because all those potential adverse environmental impacts. And then and then
Lance, we can't hear you right now. You might need to move closer to your mic.
I'm sorry. I was saying that we're going to move into the review processes relates to the special use permit and the large-scale systems. So as a part of a special use permit, again, one of the benefits to going this route as opposed to some of the ones that I highlighted earlier is that it requires a public hearing. So that public hearing, as identified here, you're going to have to held, it's got a 62-day window, basically, from the time you close it. If you close that public hearing, then the action can automatically be approved in some instances. So what we suggest, what we've seen, is that once we start to seek a review process while we're getting information back to the community and municipal boards, during that timeframe, we like to include the public. So we usually set the public hearing while we're doing that coordinated review for a meeting day either at the end of that review process or in the middle, because a lot of times this takes more than one meeting, because you're getting, you're getting information from the public, but also the plans themselves are being revised to incorporate those comments and feedback received from those agencies. So we've seen a lot where communities don't want to open up the public hearing until after SEACR. We've seen some that wait until they get what they deemed a really approved plan before they want to go that route. I tend to believe most communities probably want to be transparent, and the best way to do that is you want to do the environmental review, but incorporate the public during that process, because they tend to know something that might come out of their, you know, from the history and their knowledge of the site that we can use as part of that review.
Right, just to echo that really quickly, I just recently had a couple of communities I've been working with on some of the support projects is that they were going through the SEACR review process. They didn't end the SEACR review process, but they closed the public hearing. And that started the 62-day shot clock, and then a lot of information still needed to be submitted, a lot of questions needed to be answered. That 62-day window closed. And then, you know, if that happens, legality issues can arise. So I always advise, keep the public hearing open. It's very simple. Keep a public hearing open until you know SEACR is about to be completed, you've got all your answers and so forth, and you're in a position to, you know, getting towards an approval.
Right. Special use permit review process, I'm trying to make this quick, because I don't, the Visiting Counties, those, I know they've got a detailed review for you guys in terms of referral process. So special use permit and review process, you know, includes site plan, some instances subdivision and special use permit. So we would suggest as part of that SEACR review process that you're going to do an all-inclusive review on all those applications. And then once SEACR and the public hearings are held, then you start taking action on individual actions, individual applications. This is also where we get into conditions of approval on each of the applications. Subdivision can have conditions, site plan can have conditions depending upon the board that you work with, but special use permit specifically should have conditions. Your local law has requirements that you develop, and those requirements are what the special use permit has to adhere to. And you're going to have timeframes associated with that. Different application, different material is going to be required, which I'm going to highlight here briefly. So as we get into this later on, I'm going to highlight some conditions that you should be considering when you're approving a special use permit. Application requirements for energy systems. This is your local law, and you're saying with every local law, for any solar application, these are the things that we typically see required for all of them. You've got your site plan, you've got an existing features plan that shows you the lay of the land as it exists today. It's got some kind of a construction sequence or a schedule associated with it, the timeframes of how they're going to do different things. Most importantly, a drainage mitigation and SWIP plan. Every project that we've seen, the acreage of disturbance is well over an acre, and therefore that triggers the need for a speediness permit under D.C. requirements and/or your MS4, your local community requirements. And then also that requires them to do mitigation associated with that. So that plan should be part of that application before you even do your coordination. Equipment specification sheets, you need to know what's going on the site. That should be included so that when we do the referral to everybody, they understand the materials that are going to be used. Another important part is abandonment and decommissioning plan. Every one of these solar laws should be requiring a decommissioning plan to be provided. That's the process for the removal of the solar field, once it's, you know, once it's no longer useful or it's been deemed abandonment, based on your code and how that definition works. I've also put a little note at the end of this for agreement. There's two different things. Decommissioning plan is the plan that kind of highlights what that process looks like. That should definitely be required. The agreement is kind of something that we're figuring out a little bit more as we go along this process. And that agreement is usually the legal, the ramifications to this, where basically it's an agreement like a solar maintenance agreement that you might have. It's an agreement written between all parties involved. That would be the owner of the land. That would also be the applicant of the solar project, any leases that they may or may have, and then the local municipality. And then that agreement gets written, and basically, in summary, it identifies who is responsible and at what point is responsible for decommissioning that site. Some communities will adopt their own law or agreement plan, some kind of use examples. But ultimately, we would encourage the agreements to be used, because I think it could run with the land, it could be filed. Somebody sells the property, it goes to the next owner, and it just summarizes who's responsible for what. Operation and maintenance plan, I'm going to get to a little bit later. Traffic analysis, so you know, we need to know, these things typically are generating very, very small amounts of traffic once operating, but the construction process, it's a good opportunity for us. These roads are sometimes rural roads or subdivision roads, and we need to know how many vehicles we're anticipating. So a traffic analysis being provided would be
And another thing to really take into consideration of where the access is going to be, is that a local road? Is that a county road or a state road? Because weight limits come into effect, and that could really deviate where you can have site access to those for the construction.
Yep. Voice study, if your community elected to go in, the pilot program, payment and low taxes would be required. Road use agreement, as Shawn alluded, when you have these rural roads during construction, they could be damaged. So we've been seeing some communities require an agreement or surety to be provided that during construction, if anything were to occur to their local roads, they use this to help repair those. And then any additional reports, you know, wetland delineation reports, FACE studies as required by SHIPPO, that's the State Historic Preservation Office, as part of reviews. Real quickly, this is the last slide, and then there'll be Livingston County. But this, this is your standard requirements that you would see on a site plan, for the most part. This is your lock coverage, your setbacks that get set, whatever buffers that you deemed appropriate as part of the local law, what height requirements you set. A lot of times, they range between 12 to 15 feet is what we've seen. That's the top of the solar panel. Now, technologies has advanced, and so now we're getting rackings where there's two of them, and then they're tracking, which then they rotate. So your height requirement should be what it would be when the solar panel goes full tilt at the top. Landscaping and buffering, all solar projects, for the most part, should have some visual impact associated with it due to the residential properties that surround it possibly, and so you would require a landscaping plan to be provided. They're also going to have fencing, security fencing as required for them. Noise and glare studies will be provided, security fencing, as I highlighted. And then the drainage plan and SWIP for stormwater mitigation. I know I ran through that quickly. I'm hoping to get to the question and answers, excuse me, at the end. So there'll be a more opportunity to kind of get into detail. So will be a more opportunity to kind of get into detail.
Okay, so now we've got the county referral process and the role of the county planning board. There's a lot of boards involved in land use review. And from your local planning board, zoning board, even your town and village boards. The county planning boards have a role in the land use process in very prescribed ways. So New York State General Municipal Law 239 M and N allows that if you have a county planning board, then there are certain actions that need to be referred to the county planning board. Is that because the state likes many, many levels of government and putting up hoops? Perhaps, maybe, but actually, there's a, there's a reason county planning boards exist, and that is to look at inter-community and countywide issues. There's a certain, I should say, not all county planning boards look alike. Every county has its own kind of iteration of a county planning board. For some, you have desk reviews at the staff level. For others, you have several agencies that come together with the county planning department, and they conduct the 239 reviews. In Livingston County, we have 26 representatives, one for each town and village in our county. So it's a very large board, plus we have four alternates. So each individual county does it slightly differently, but we're all governed by General Municipal Law M and N. And that says, there's a certain list of actions that need to come before our county planning board if they fit certain location criteria, and we'll go through those here on the slide. Which is pretty much anything to do with a comprehensive plan at the municipal level or a zoning ordinance where it's being adopted, something's being rezoned, or there's an amendment to zoning. Your typical planning board and Z B A actions, like special use permit, site plan, subdivision, and any variances. Also, other approvals as agreed upon, such as moratoria. We also see at the county planning board, solar moratoria, battery energy storage moratoria, solar laws. So even if a solar law is outside of zoning, if it's a land use law, county planning board can see it. Next slide, please. And typically, in state law, you have to have a referral to the county planning board. If any of those actions on the list we just talked about are within 500 feet of a list of triggers. So that would be municipal boundary, state or county highway, county or state or county park. So like in our region, anything 500 feet of Letchworth State Park. County stream or drainage channel, we actually don't have any county-owned stream channels in Livingston County. Also, if there's a state or county facility on a property and your project is within 500 feet, that meets the trigger. Or what gets most of our county planning board reviews to us is being 500 feet of a farm operation in an agricultural district. That's not an agricultural zoning district, that's actually agricultural, counties, agricultural districts, numbers one, two, and three in Livingston County. It's a separate kind of right-to-farm program. Of course, it has the same kind of name, so it's a little confusing. But next slide, please. But not everything has to come before a county planning board if it's within 500 feet of those triggers, or we would all be buried in paperwork. So there's two kind of things, two alternative processes that you can have. A county can enter into an agreement with a municipality where, and this is stated in, in General Municipal Law, that it's basically an agreement that the county and the municipality both agree that this list, this prescribed list of actions do not have a significant inter-community and countywide issue or impact. For example, swimming pools, accessory structures. It would be a defined list. And if the municipality has a referral of that type, they could just state in their minutes that county planning board review was not required because it falls under number 16 of our agreement with the county planning board. So by stating that in your minutes, you kind of take care of, of the notification for county planning board review. Wanted to say, what's not on the slide, there's another version, and that is county planning boards do not need to take everything to a full county planning board meeting. There's also what's called local option. And in Livingston County, it works that if we get an area variance for a shed that's violating a side setback, and it's not in our municipal agreement with that, that community, or if we don't have a municipal agreement with that community, we can do what's called an in-house review. We'll contact the municipal representative and say, hey, we received this. Preliminary review shows, we don't think it's a significant inter-community or countywide issue. Do you agree? And then if they agree, we just send it back to the locals, saying, thank you for reviewing, for referring it to the county planning board. You've fulfilled your obligations under state law. Whatever you decide to do at a municipality is okay with us. We're not approving it, we're not disapproving it. It's up to you because of, there's no significant countywide impact. Next slide, please. Very important part of process. County planning board needs to have a full statement or a complete application before it can do any kind of review. So or in your, in your solar applications or in any kind of application. What a complete application is, or a full statement, is anything that you require at your municipal level to be a complete application, that's what we need, plus a referral for. So that often includes an act data statement, if it's within 500 feet of that district property. Seeker or the State Environmental Quality Review Act forms. And anything that your code says you need for site plan review or special use permit. Or if your solar law says you need to have an operation and maintenance plan. When it comes to the county, we need to see that operation and maintenance plan, or it's not a complete application. For timelines, each county planning board kind of does it a little differently. But for Livingston County, a county planning board can have it up to 10 days to review an application. So for Livingston County, our deadline is the Monday of the week prior to our meeting. It can be shorter than that, it really depends on the county itself. So I would advise, if you're not in Livingston County, and you haven't interacted with your county planning board, just to take a look at those individual timelines. A municipality, here's the most important bullet ever, it's the last bullet on this slide, which is municipality has to refer actions to the county planning board before making a final decision on that action. It's one of those procedural steps, right? That if a decision is challenged through an Article 78 proceeding, one of the steps that you have to show that county planning board, this referral happened prior to making a final decision, and that the county responded, or that their deadlines passed, which I'll touch on in the next slide. So prior to making final action. Next slide, please. So county planning board takes, or you refer something to the county planning board, that starts a time clock of 30 days. Right, so the county planning board has 30 days to respond, or the county planning board and the municipality can agree on extending that time if the county planning board needs more time to review, or if there's an extenuating circumstance. The town or village has to consider county planning board review within those 30 days, or within two days prior to where the decision is made at the local level. Again, the, the time period can be extended. Here's another very important bullet, especially with projects that are very procedure-heavy, like solar projects. Please don't take early votes and condition those votes on county planning board approval. So you sent the referral to the county planning board, but you've got your public hearing the next week, so you're talking about. And you decide, we'll vote to approve the project, conditioning it on the county planning board finding an approval. Well, that's not procedurally correct, and it's one of those procedural steps. And if the county planning board comes back with a modification or a disapproval, there could be procedural issues. Let's call them issues. So one last thing here is modifications and approval. If the county planning board comes back with a recommendation, we are an advisory board only. We come back with a recommendation of disapproval or with modifications. The only way to overturn those at the local level is that that board needs to vote on the proposal and have a majority plus one in the affirmative. So if you have a five-member board, four members have to approve the referral in order to overturn a county disapproval or a modification. Next slide, please. And I'm going to turn it over to Mary Underhill to talk about county planning board and solar in Livingston County.
So this is a slide that we refer to as our feedback loop. For the, one of the things that we've experienced with Livingston County, the folks are familiar, is that we, we've got quite a bit of solar activity in our county, both small and large. And when we started this process in 2016, we thought we knew a lot of the answers and what we found in the processes. It really takes all the way from the local law development through site plan and special use permit, and all the way through construction to be able to inform yourselves about everything that you really should have known at the beginning of the process. But solar is such a rapidly developing industry that we really didn't have the answers before. So what this represents is some of our experience and some of our knowledge going through the system and then trying to educate ourselves so that we, we refine ourselves. So if you take a look at the bottom right-hand corner, because I do county planning board support, and I also do support the local municipalities as they write the local laws. And then our solar coordinator, Mike Dunn, does a lot of the onsite support for construction. We get an opportunity to talk to attorneys, engineers, and code officers all the time about how solar is evolving in their community. So this feedback loop represents one week. And I just randomly picked one particular week to make this slide. And so a code officer gives us a call, they've been on the site, and they, they have issues that come up. And we think that our, our local laws are rock solid, and we've gone through special use permit and site plan review. And we think, you know, we know how to handle all these situations. And then a code guy gets in the field and says, you know what, I've got grass that's growing up over the solar panels. And so he's got an issue. And we think, okay, well, you know, the grass is unsightly, it's a maintenance issue. And it's actually an efficiency issue for the solar company. So we're exercising our brain every day, and so the code guy says, you know, what, what, how am I going to solve this issue? And it's multiplied in our county, because we've got multiple sites in construction. So one person's experience is probably two or three other people's experience. So you end up wanting to figure out where your next resource is. So brainstorming, we're like, okay, it's the operations and maintenance plan. It's also the Uniform Fire Prevention and Building Code. And so where we go from that is, okay, if we know that the O and M plan is going to help the folks in the field, then we've got to make sure that the O and M plan is built and written the way that it's going to meet the needs of the community on the, as they're reviewing the construction site. So as you're following the arrows, you can say, okay, to the left, now we need to know that the O and M plan is well, well-written. And that brings us to local law development that should be specific and enforceable. And one of those pieces is a very solid O and M plan. Because I attend local board meetings, I can bring that piece of information back to the town. And I can also bring that piece of information to the county planning board review. Now, this is just one specific issue, right? But imagine that every, every site has got multiple issues evolving. So we hit the town meetings, we hit the county planning board review, and we're letting our folks know that your O and M plan needs to be specific, which is something that Lance had talked to about. And then also opportunities for training like this one that shows us how important an O and M plan is. And that's just one issue. From going back to the O and M plan and the fire code, then the code officer says, you know, there are other people that are probably in my shoes. What that leads to is, we need to communicate with all of the code officers in Livingston County, or at least all the code officers that are experiencing solar. That's about six of our communities all at the same time. And we want to be looking for onsite support and training so that everybody knows the same information. Next issue, next call, I get a call that says, all the trees and shrubs are dead on the site. And I've called the office phone number that they've given me, and it goes to a corporate office over in Texas. It has nothing to do with my site, and he said, you know, what am I going to do? I've got shrubs and trees, and I've got an adjacent. Where do we go with this information? We go to the O and M plan, and now we need some specificity in that. We need to know that, oh, because my internet connection is unstable, oh, but here. We need to know that the O and M plan is going to be specific enough so that the code officer is able to identify who should replace it, how and when often it should be replaced, and who determines that. That also gets our planning boards exercising their brain. The next time I sit down at the table to review a solar project, I'm going to be looking for that. Maybe it's also reinforced in the special use conditions. And again, you can see it goes over to code officer communication, onsite training support, and back down through the local law development. Next day, I get a call, or so lacking specific solar complaint process and contact information I wrapped in there. But then we get, oh, yeah. And then we end up getting to another site visit. We've got piled grass under the panels, we get birds nesting under the panels, and we trigger our fire code again, and our, our need for training. So you can see what we've done is, for every site we've gone to, we've figured out how we should enhance our local laws. I'm to you, Lance.
I'm sorry, I lost my camera for a minute. Moving on to the operation and maintenance plan, which is a component of the special use permit. So basically, we view this as two parts. There's the, the technical part, what is the plan per the, the solar, you know, your applicant? What is, what is it intended to do? Basically, what it is, is it highlights those technical services that they're going to operate that solar energy system for, for the duration and the life of that project. How often they need to go to do maintenance, you know, your everyday type of maintenance versus how often they got to go out there to maintain the grass and the snow plowing systems. They want to keep that system effective and operation so that they can continue the gross income from that. As it deteriorates over time, they might be out there more frequently to make sure the units are all up to snuff and, and handling the appropriate output that they're, they're designed to do. I apologize, I'm going to go through this pretty quickly, but I want to get to some of these other slides. Operation and maintenance plan, this is some of those actions that, that you will see the solar companies take. There's the preventative maintenance measures to perform on the equipment with the purpose of ensuring that failures do not occur and to lessen the consequences of breakdowns. There's the corrective maintenance. This is performed only after equipment and sites have failures or breakdowns are reported. A lot of these have these electronic systems that, that something will flash on a computer system off, off-site to another location, and then they'll issue their team and send them out so they can get out there immediately to go remedy the situation. And then there's the predictive maintenance, the maintenance that monitors the performance and condition of equipment. They want to make sure that this thing is running as efficiently as possible, otherwise they're not making the money that it's intended to. Then there's what we see as the reviewee, and what we, we want to be a part of that as part of the, the municipality that's approving the soil law. Every time you get a special use permit, we ask for an operation maintenance plan, but not just any operation maintenance plan. Not your standard, we'll be there, you know, to mow the grass once to, to twice a year templates that we sometimes get. We want a very site-specific O and M plan. How are you going to operate this site on this location in the town of Ava? How is this going to function? What are your day-to-day routine activities? What are your week-to-week activities? What are your month-to-month, year-to-year activities? How often will you be doing these services? And who gets the reports? What type of staffing is going to be there? What's your emergency plan? What's your emergency plan? Who are we supposed to contact? Who are you going to contact? You being the applicant and the solar company. These things have to be detailed and outlined on that O and M plan. Sometimes through the review process, the boards sometimes forget that they have say in these components, that they get handed the O and M plan. And they, I think for, you know, I would say can't speak for all the boards, but what I've seen is that a lot of times they just say, okay, thank you. And then they move on to the next part of the process. And then, and that shouldn't be they, this is one of the most important parts in reviews that, that the boards will have is how they want that site to be operated daily. Now, some of the technical stuff, you know, it is what it is. The solar companies have a routine and a process that they have to meet, and they'll have to follow. That part doesn't get changed. But who the reports go to, how often they get generated? Who's going to respond? Who are the contacts? That stuff is most certainly the purview of the reviewing board. Some examples that we've seen pulled out, this isn't necessarily ideal, but these are some examples that we've seen in O and M plans, kind of more or less some of the main maintenance stuff that, that we typically get to. The weed maintenance, the vegetation, the mowing of the grass. A lot of communities will require that to be at a certain height, whether they regulate it by height or they regulate it by times out in a month or to a, you know, every three months, five times a year, four times a year, whatever that determination is. It gets identified here. This is ultimately part of the approval of the special use permit. So if, if there's an error or they're not meeting that report or the report of them being onsite to mow the lawn doesn't get generated in that timeframe that you, that you had identified, then that's a problem. And that's that they're failing to meet the conditions of the special use permit, which I'm going to highlight in a minute. Screening, as Marion alluded earlier with, with the landscaping, trees being dead or removed or fell over or eaten to the deer. Who's responsible for that? Well, the O and M plan should be highlighting that the solar entity, the LECE of the project, who was governed or who was approved to do the use with certain elements being provided, one of which would be screening and landscaping. Well, those, those landscaping are conditions and requirements of the special use permit and the site plan and should be highlighted in your O and M plan. Who's responsible for removing them? How quickly should they be removed? When does it get reported? And so if, if they fail to meet that criteria or, you know, you drive by the site and you, you see trees down or missing, well, that's an indication that they're not, they're not being met. And so if we haven't, if the code enforcement officer or whoever was identified to get the reports aren't receiving these reports, then that's a trigger for them to go back and, and talk to the solar company that's operating the system and get them to be more compliant with the approval. Road maintenance. Now, their access road is one part of that process. The main road accessing the site is another part. We've kind of basically divided solar projects into like three types of roads. There's your main access road that's coming in. That's, that's the main road that gets you into the solar site. Then you have your access, your side access roads. That's getting you to certain parts of the site. Those are typically your hard surface roads compliant with fire code, meaning the heavy load apparatus requirements, providing offloading ability, pullouts and turnarounds at the end of those because technically they're dead ends. As part of that, the third component would be your, what we call our, our maintenance roads. Those are sometimes your subsurface roads that go around the perimeter of the site. We like to require, what we've seen in some of the other counties, specifically requiring a 20-foot minimum from solar panel to fence line to accommodate these emergency vehicles. And we've seen it with subsurface access roads.
Yeah, and it's something that what else we're seeing more and more with these projects. And we've been kind of incorporating in that in some of our recommendations is in addition to the perimeter subsurface, excuse me, is having mangate over 300 feet for emergency apparatus. Excuse me.
Those mangates are on each of the fence line. So if you have a fence line on all four sides of the fence, they would have a mangate, at least one on each side. The distance and how often they need to be there can be dictated by the code enforcement officer that's responsible for approving that process. But ultimately, we've been seeing that being incorporated in most of the sites that we've been coming across recently. Conditions, this is what I wanted to get to. Conditions and pre-construction requirements that kind of go hand in hand. Special use permit. So I think one, one aspect of the special use permit that I think it's forgetting is that this is a permit. The community is issuing, the CEO, the boards are issuing a permit. That permit allows the applicant to construct and build a solar field for as long as it remains compliant with the conditions that were set forth, the site plan that was provided and the O and M plan that governs how this is going to remain operational for the life of the project. If, if at any point in time, that project fails to meet any of those three things, the site plan compliance, the special use permit conditions, which I'll highlight, and/or the operation maintenance plan components, then that's justification for bringing them back in and reviewing it with them because they're no longer compliant with that permit. It's no different than the building permit or grading permit that the code enforcement officer may be issuing. Those have conditions attached to it. They're required to adhere to them. It's no different than a speedies permit, a permit that governs from DEC for a site that has stormwater compliance. They're obligated to adhere to that permit and those conditions. And if they failed to meet them, that permit can be taken away. I haven't seen any go that far, but I, I think the, the point of it is, is that if there's failure in the site that, that happens, day, day 30 or year 22, that obligation is to report it. Code enforcement officer gets the information and brings them back to the table, and we review and correct that action. Some of the typical conditions that we're seeing and that we, we would suggest be incorporated into the special use permit, either because it's already identified in your local law that you've adopted or it's part of the review process. But obtaining a building permit within a time period from receiving approvals or have it be automatically terminated. What absolutely happens is a project gets approved, the plans get signed, there's decommissioning and local law or, excuse me, pilot agreements. And those things have to be agreed upon at some point in time. Sometimes these solar companies are trying to get funding, which takes time. The issue is, is that we just don't want this to sit for three years or two years or however long it is, and then automatically assume that we're good to go. So we put a timetable on it, and that doesn't mean they can't get extensions to that. We've had several that have requested extensions and several have received extensions. But what it does do is it gives them a timetable. And as long as they're compliant with that timetable, we don't lose that review authority that we had. Those conditions are still applicable, the seeker is still applicable, and the approval is still applicable. Staff comments and approvals, those are your engineers, your outside agencies that, that may require certain things to be provided, your attorneys through their review, highway departments for access, and so on. Those typically should be, you know, if all of their comments weren't addressed as part of the review process, I have some communities that require it to be before they grant approval. I have some that are willing to make those conditions of approval. Those most certainly should be there. Site plan approval is definitely a condition of special use permit. You can't have one without the other, or you shouldn't. Operation and maintenance plan, as I highlighted earlier, I would make that a condition of approval. It should go without saying, but I would put it in there that way. And I'll talk about the handoff, the handoff from approval to permitting. And that's sometimes where we lose some of this information because the code enforcement officers are not necessarily always involved from day one as part of the review process to the approval process. They get handed this at the back end of it, and they're trying to cycle through all of this information, which takes, you know, months to years to get through. And it makes it very difficult. So for those communities, we suggest that we highlight everything that you want them to be conditioned on, put it in there. Decommissioning plan in an agreement, that should be a staple as part of the, the conditions of approval. Your SWIP, whatever approval that was necessary for them to mitigate stormwater, even though they're going to have to get a permit, and that's outside comments, as I highlighted earlier, that still should be identified in there. Prior to obtaining building permit, the applicant must provide a revocable financial surety. This is your decommissioning estimate. This is a requirement of the decommissioning plan in most local laws. This should be provided prior to an issuance of a permit, not necessarily prior to signing of the plans, but prior to issuance of any permits.
Also, what we're seeing with a lot of communities is a letter of credit. Yes, for when you're doing construction to cover the sediment erosion control measures and also any damage to the roadways. There's a financial security to repair the roadways as well.
Yeah, you know, some communities, I think it sometimes it gets forgotten that the decommissioning plan, the intense, the purpose of it and the estimate is to govern the site for the life of the project. And it can only be used upon the site being deemed abandoned or no longer functional. The letter of credits that we're talking about, or surety, or an maintenance agreement, or an escrow of some dollar amount, that usually governs the construction aspect from start to finish of the construction prior to getting a CFC or CFO for the site. That, that dollar amount, sometimes some codes that's written in there, some it's not. But we would suggest that you consider doing that for these because that helps with the erosion control, the, the grading of the site, the stormwater element. Something happens during construction and there's a delay or a complaint or something. This just gives additional benefit to the community and added protection. And then last part of this is the pre-construction meeting. And I'm going to, this is the handoff, the handoff from the reviewing parties to the permitting parties. And, you know, a lot of communities don't do it. It's not necessarily required, but we found that the ones that do this, it definitely cleans up the process and makes it more efficient and, and helpful to the code enforcement officers or the permitting processes and getting everybody to the table. So your pre-construction meeting, typically what this is, is it's, it's prior to the issuance of any permits or construction beginning. Sometimes erosion incentive control items might be installed, construction access road might be installed. But as related to solar, we, we would suggest before any work being done on the site, after plans have been approved and all conditions have been met, we would suggest having this pre-con. That's typically scheduled by the code enforcement officer. So the plans are being submitted. They're going to review to make sure that all the components of the conditions have been met. Once they deem them ready to go, they would call the meeting. The meeting typically would include all staff, engineers, highway department, those people who have say in the project or who had say during the review of the project. Then other agencies who might be issuing a permit or approval or want to be involved for informational purposes, DOT, DEC, the county, whoever that might be. You can bring them to the table. Obviously, the applicant and the applicant's contractor should be there. This is an opportunity for us to sit down, identify who's doing what and who's responsible for what, and how do we get ahold of those people? So that during construction, if anything goes awry or if we have a question, question being the municipality, we know who to contact. And these meetings are typically recorded minutes so that there's an actual recording of the meeting that gets filed with the project. So then you have your approvals, you have your conditions, everything's been signed, everything's been filed. And now you have a pre-con that kind of highlights the construction part of the project, which I'm going to go over agenda in a minute, but then that gets filed with the project. So if there's ever any questions, you, you start, you work your way backwards from there. The meeting minutes of the pre-con, back to the plan, back to the O and Ms, and so on. Correct. Pre-construction agenda, typical agenda, you know, you have your contacts, who, who's, who's doing well, who's responsible for what? Who attended the meeting? Your approvals, your agreements, your permits. What approvals were required? What agreements were required? What permits are required or were required? And what conditions were they attached to them? This is where we identify if we have our decommissioning agreements. If we have outside agency approvals like DEC for, or are record for wetlands, what's associated with those? Highlight those permits so that the code enforcement officer or the permits or who's ever doing the observation and inspection, which I'll cover, they know what's involved. Conditions of the requirements. We already have them in all the resolutions, if any, were provided. But here's an opportunity to, to again, highlight them because honestly, from the approval of the plans, and Mary mentioned it earlier, yeah, the solar companies typically sell these off to another agency, another solar project. And they might not know all of the detail that, that happened during that review process. And even though they can refer back to the plans, they don't necessarily get handed everything that we get handed to. So highlighting those conditions again in this report just further indicates, gives them more clarity as to what's required, especially if there's triggers like soil restoration requirements or soil sampling requirements, stuff that might occur during the construction project that you want to incorporate, again, helps them identify who's responsible for that. Our project schedule, when do these things occur? Most of the time, you know, it's from construction erosion incentive control and access road to mass grading, to installation of solar panels and putting stormwater stuff in, and then closing out the project site and stabilizing it. Not necessarily that order, but those are some of the highlights of the project schedule. Erosion incentive control and SWIP. Here's where I'm learning some municipalities are not understanding what that process and what that means. Any project that disturbs more than one acre, not residential, but any other project disturbs more than one acre is required to get a permit from DEC. That permit is called, you know, that's your speedies general permit. And those have been updated every five years so often. That permit gets put into a site mailbox. Typically, we call it a SWIP, SWPP, Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan mailbox. And that goes in your SWIP, that the report that gets approved as part of the review process. That permit, like any permit, has conditions attached to that. Those conditions typically identify whether or not they've been permitted to disturb at one time or another more than five acres. And if they are, how often they need to inspect the site? And if they're under five, how often do you need to inspect the site? If you're under five, it's one time a week. If you're over five, it's twice a week. Those inspections are done by the applicant's third-party inspector who's certified to do so. Those inspection reports get generated, they get put into the mailbox on site. They then get forwarded to the municipality who we identify to receive them. Typically, the code enforcement officers. But also, we would suggest that any engineering firm that's been used or your town engineer or village engineer be the point of contact for that as well. They get filed, and then they get reviewed internally when deemed appropriate. But a lot of times you should be reviewing those to see if they're being compliant. If they're not, if you're seeing violations over and over again, well, there's an issue on the site that needs to be corrected. But those reports should be generated and should be filed. A lot of communities and code enforcement officers are realizing are not getting these reports, don't know they're supposed to be getting. So I think this is an opportunity to have a pre-con to kind of highlight when those are done, who gets them, how they should be received, and then how do you review them and how do you interpret them? Project safety requirements, these are your OSHA requirements, all those standard rules and regulations that govern the site during construction, they get highlighted at this point. Testing requirements. Most of the stuff on a solar site are private. Doesn't necessarily require like a road that's going to be dedicated to the local municipality or infrastructure that's going to be dedicated. However, there's plenty of, of, of testing, third-party testing that would have to be done for the electrical components. Maybe the local code enforcement officer wants the, the roadways, that main access road and the side access road to be tested for compaction and make sure they are compliant with, with the local, with the state fire code requirements and so on. So this is where we highlight who does that, how often those are being done, who's responsible and who's reporting them, so that we know where they have to go. And then the cleanup of the site and the closing out of the site. Again, pre-con is not required, but I find it to be very beneficial because it generates a report, who's doing what and at what times, and who's responsible for something. It just makes the construction process that more, more seamless, specifically when, when problems, because problems are going to occur. Weather doesn't always cooperate and issues occur. And this helps identify what we have to do. That's, that's everything that I, that I had. I'm sorry, I went through that pretty quickly, but I'll turn it back over to you guys.
Thank you, and thank you to all of our presenters for getting through such an amazing amount of material in such a short amount of time. I know a lot of people missed some things. So again, the presentation is recorded and will be sent out to all registered participants after the call tonight. So let's get right into it here. And one of the first questions we got was what would an adverse effect be to a neighboring property? That was brought up in MRB's first presentation when you were mentioning mitigating potential adverse effects. So I'll give that one to MRB group, please. What would an adverse effect be to a neighboring property?
I was trying to go through the questions and I couldn't really follow, but I think I understood. So adverse effects to neighboring properties, what, what would they be? So when you do your seeker review, when, when seeker, basically, this is what seekers, the purpose of seekers. It's, it takes your site-specific information, puts it onto what is called the EAF. That's the environmental assessment form. That tells us what elements are, are part of the site project and what's there on the site that has to be evaluated. That then gets referred out to all the entities identified as being responsible for issuing an approval. an approval or a permit, or has some say in this process. They get information back to the reviewing board, and that's what used to identify potential impacts as part of that Part II and Part III that they have to evaluate. Those impacts, sometimes we see are regarding drainage could be a potential impact, you know, how, how runoff from the site could be impacting neighboring properties, how noise during construction could potentially impacting a property. Visual impact, we, we highlighted earlier with landscaping, you know, trees and shrubs and landscaping of a certain size and location to help buffer the site from the visual potential impact from the neighboring property. These are, these are all things that have to be evaluated as part of that environmental review by the identified party, mostly the, the planning board, sometimes the ZBA, and that's, that's what gets determined. And we use those outside entities in the site plans and those reports, the O&amp;M, the decommissioning, to help evaluate that.
Thank you. For our next question, this is for Livingston County. Is there a particular municipality's solar law that's adopted in place that would be a good model for people to use?
Haley, I, I'm getting like a little echo on yours, but just FYI. One of the things that we've learned, working with our county, our municipalities, is we have a very wide spectrum of what they would feel would be a good solar law. That's very municipal-specific, I think, but what we can tell you is those folks that have done the research and looked for themselves good local laws, a couple of things that they, they did was, first, they educated themselves. You have, you have to research, you have to know the industry that you're looking at, they went, a few people went out to solar sites, they took a look at local laws, and then they went back to their comp plans and their ag plans, and then figured out what position they would have, and then they sought the laws that fed into their guidance documents. And so, we've, we have anywhere from prohibition to what we would consider solar-friendly laws in Livingston County and everything in between. What we do find is that nicer, a model law was a starting off point for most of our municipalities, but our laws have increased with what we would consider town-specific or town-protective language, and we're finding that the laws are building upon each other. So, something that was two years old or three years old is outdated, and some of the newer laws have more robust language to them. We have a couple in our county that we do put out, I can put those in the chat, but again, you guys have to figure out what your position is on solar before you do the seeking. And that solar committee that last talked about, that's your foundation, that's where you get started.
Thank you, Mary, and I apologize for whatever sort of reverberation I'm having. I have my stuff down low, and I'm sorry here. So my next question is going to be for MRB group. It seems like there is a bit of confusion when it comes to some of the things that were discussed tonight, which of those are applying to large-scale projects, which might be under the old Article 10, the new 94C process, as compared to what falls strictly to that of the local law? So can you discuss just briefly what those thresholds are? And, you know, with that, did everything that you were talking about, the, you know, construction plan, the operations and maintenance plan, is that all for all projects, or is that for smaller scale, as some of the new citing already permits that? So, please, MRB group.
Sean and I both probably have to answer this one a little bit. So, mo, all of today's conversation and requirements were geared towards those projects that are 20 megawatts or less. Those are all considered to be large, or in some cases, small-scale, depending upon the megawatts, that are appropriate and identified in your local law. Those solar laws, which we highlighted, that, that's where you should be requiring the decommissioning plan, the O&amp;M plan, and the special use permit and site plan, those are the things that should be required for all of those projects, 20 megawatts or less. That process can tier whichever way you, is most appropriate for your community, but, but both, all the information tonight that we talked about was governing those projects from one to 20. And once we get to 20 or more, that's what triggers what Sean was talking about, which is the, the 94C and Article 10.
Yeah, I mean, 94C i- is really a, a new for a, a lot of communities, and Article 10 was the first, you know, where it went, went over to the citing boards for these large-scale solar projects where it's reviewed by the citing board, and it became a very lengthy three-year process, which had a pre-application process, the application process, and it, you know, like I said, it usually took two to three years to get a project approved. The 94C process is a little bit more streamlined approach, and that, and I see a lot of the Article 10 projects shifting over to the 94C. There's many municipalities that had entered that Article 10 process, and now they're transitioning because they don't have to deal with the review processes and so forth. And if anyone would like more information in regarding this, I'd, I'd be more than happy to send information over to you.
Just to clarify too, those, those type of projects, the 94C, Article 10, they follow a different procedure altogether. They go a different route, a lot of times, they only come to you as part of the, the secret review process for informational purposes, but no local boards will have any authority over those projects that are 20 megawatts or more. Those go a different process altogether.
Thank you, and just to be very clear, there's a little bit of confusion around the threshold of 20 megawatts. Could someone see, and again, this can go down to MRB group, could you just discuss how, what is that threshold and how it works? Whether the 20 megawatts are going to 94C or to local law?
So, if, so the applicant would submit an application, and people, they would know that, because there, a lot of this is predicated on funding too. The solar projects are restraining go through funding sources, so their megawatts and the grid, the grid in which they're connecting to is only going to allow them so many megawatts to be going, connected. So that review process takes place before they even submit an application with the local authority governing. They made that agreement, that agreement gets part of the application and they submit it. They would only submit for this review process for as long as it was less than 20 megawatts or less, because this is the only process that would allow them to do that. Anything greater than 20 megawatts, anything that they designated as being exerting energy or, you know, that, going back to the grid, greater than 20 megawatts cannot go through this process. It's, it would be required to follow this other review process, this 94C and Article 10 process. It wouldn't be allowed to come to the community, so they would never submit that.
I mean, with the, with the whole Article 10 process, I mean, it, we're working with several communities, and how the, the, the process used to work, and, you know, yes, you have a citing board with different members of the state reviewing the project, and also they would govern, they would allow two ad hoc members to, as part of the community, to have say and input as part of the project. That was kinda removed from the Article 10 process, now, from my understanding, they're not even allowing ad hoc members to partake in that review process, so it really takes the community out of the, the review process. So, yes, the, the municipality has a say, but, I mean, really, I mean, it, it really boils down to, to the state.
Yeah, I mean, don't get it wrong, the state's following a very thorough, rigorous process to make sure that the components that they have provided.
I hear you, Lance.
Sorry, the state, the state's providing a very rigorous and detailed process as part of their review of these 94C and Article 10 projects. I would also like to identify that, you know, these, these projects that are going that route aren't 21 or 22 megawatts, these are thousand-acre sites, you know, that are being proposed and going that route. They're not coming in with anything that borders that line. The ones that border that line are going under it because they wanna apply for the local permit process versus going that route. If they, if they're gonna go 94C, they're going all the way, and they're going whatever the largest acreage that they can find and that they can permit and get on the table, that's what they're gonna do.
Thank you. My next question is going to be a little bit of a truthful question here, and this is for the county. The first part is, have you ever seen a shade study been produced for trees that would be removed, or how does typically tree removal that you've seen work? And then the second part of that goes along with that, and is how do you typically see weeds and growth being managed?
So I can talk about the weeds and the growth being managed, and Lance might wanna jump in on this, but the first one I missed, but let me do the first, the second one. For the management underneath the panels, we find that to be super important, and I think that you can rely heavily on your operations and management plan, and you need to look for specificity in that, how weeds are managed, how ground, ground cover is maintained, composition of ground cover, whether it's species, species height, there might be some pollinators in there that the municipality wants to encourage, you might require some certification in order to make sure that you get whatever you want under. I would strongly encourage local law to have some specificity, because we do know that there is some industry that's talked about putting reflective panels down on the ground to use bifacial panels, so you've got solar collection top and bottom, and then if you don't require some specificity of greening underneath, you could find some impervious surface that's reflective, and you might not include that in your lack coverage, or you might not catch that in your, well, lack coverage. So I would look to, that's kinda long and winded there, but make sure your local law addresses it, your operations maintenance plan addresses it, and that your seeker discloses accurately the, the chemical that you might be using per state and federal regulations. Lance, did you have anything more on that?
No, I thought you covered it well, exactly. We, you know, as part of that review process, disturbance is a big component and that we have to review. So, what's underneath these panels is, it's gotta be stabilized, and that's how we're reviewing them, it's, they're being identified to us that is gonna be stabilized earth. So, weed control, ground control, pollinators, whatever you're proposing, that's, it's our understanding that everything beneath these panels is going to have that. And so if it doesn't, then your disturbance calculation should go up, and the mitigation measures required will go up. So a lot of these don't have to do some of the standard mitigations, because DEC has said that when you put a pole in the ground, it's not necessarily, it's just disturbance, but it's not necessarily considered impervious surface, because what's beneath it is still green, vegetated. But if you start putting different material underneath, reflective or hard surfaces, well, now you have impervious surface, and when you increase impervious surface, you have to increase water quality and mitigation approaches, which would be more costly, but also be something that would be required as part of that review process. The, the first part of the comment had something to do with tree removal, sometimes during seeker review, if there's an existing forest on the site, maybe your local law will dictate what requirements and governing over that, whether you can do, whether you can remove the trees or not remove the trees, if they're special importance or not. But what we've seen through construction is typically, if there's then trees, and we wanna determine whether or not, which ones are appropriate to remove or not, sometimes that gets done during the review process before, so that the plans can accurately reflect those trees that are going to remain on it, because that's what you want. You wanna know what's gonna be remaining, what's not, before you get to the construction.
Thank you, and I think we have time for at least one more here. So, I'll ask this of both the county and MRB group, other than the contact and recording info, what is specific about an operations and maintenance plan that might vary from one solar array to another? And are we holding solar to a higher standard than other privately-owned facilities, such as hydro, in terms of municipal oversight over operations?
That's a good question. I mean, every site is, you know, site-specific, there are different elements that you need to take into consideration when, when looking at O&amp;M plan and crafting it to suit that site. You, you brought up hydro, a hydro facility? Was that the question?
Yeah, the question is, what are we holding higher solar to a higher standard than, let's say, hydro, in terms of municipal oversight over operations?
That's a, that's a good question, and, you know, that, that is something that I, personally, I, I would, I would look into, and I could provide some feedback, because that, that's, that's a new one for me. I, I don't, we don't, I don't have too much experience dealing with hydro, or, you know, any of those kind of, type of land uses, but I could most certainly look into that.
But, for the solar site itself, it's gonna have to, in order to get an approval.
Hey Lance, we can't hear you quite well.
I'm sorry, I turned my computer, I apologize, this is.
Solar itself, just like any application that comes to the planning board is ZBA, has to be fully compliant with all the entities involved. So, if there's problems on site, there's delineation that's required, disturbance thresholds that they can't cross. If there is streams on there, there's buffering and permits that would be required of them in order to get to that point, or, or disturb those elements. If you have disturbances greater than one acre, there's stormwater components. What I'm saying is, is solar doesn't necessarily have to follow more vigorous or be overly complicated, it's just, like any other project, you have these entities, these things have to be fully compliant in order to move on to the next step, just like a residential project. The same components of the residential project, you would require them to follow through with, just like you would with solar. The difference with solar is, is that it's, it's, it's being identified, there's a removal element to it. So we have to have these decommissioning plans that follow it along, because at some point in time, in the life of the project, it'll be deemed no longer useful, and then we have to remove it. And so what happens when that's to occur? That's where, and the O&amp;M plan, those are the two plans that make it more different than, mostly different than from other projects that we've seen. The O&amp;M plan, I saw a comment earlier, and I apologize, keep going, but somebody mentioned, what's the importance of the O&amp;M plan, why do I care about that? You know, whatever they gotta do, they gotta do. Well, the O&amp;M plan, just as we highlighted, that, that's your, how often are they maintaining that road for emergency access? If they don't remove the snow, and you don't comment on how often you want it to be removed, well, I'm pretty sure they're not gonna remove it only, only as needed. And now, emergency comes up, how do we get access to the site? That's a local concern, I would think. Grass maintain, maintenance of the site, well, of course, they're gonna maintain everything they need to, to get the most out of the life of the solar, but what about the grass around the perimeter of the site? I'm pretty sure you don't want this thing to look like a mess underneath area, specifically with the landscaping and everything else, you're gonna wanna have some say about how often that grass is being treated, whether it's grass, or whether it's pollinators, or whether it's, it's dirt, you're, you're gonna wanna know what that's going to look like for now, in the 40 years that it's out there. So the O&amp;M plan is your ability to dictate how often these things are being done, and to what criteria you're gonna hold it to, because if they're not compliant with it, you can pull that permit from them, and we require them to come back in. And I think that's, I think that's a big, that's the big reason why special use permits, I think, are successful, because this is what gives you the ability, the, the ability to, to, to govern the site, not only during the review and during the permitting process, but during the life of the project.
I think, I think we should go live and take a couple of questions, don't, what do you think, Lance? She's coming back?
Yeah, I can, we can do that. I don't have a way to unmute anybody, though.
Oh, maybe we can look in the chat.
We are coming up on seven o'clock, right?
Yeah, folks, it's seven o'clock, so if there's any questions that haven't been answered, which there are, we will be sending them to you shortly, in the next couple of days after this is finished. And thank you very much for attending, and I hope everybody has a happy holiday season.
Thank you very much, guys, I do appreciate the time. Thank you very much, guys. I do appreciate the time and opportunity. Thank you.